Substance use disorders are common. There's a saying out there that everyone knows someone. It can look like you, and they can also look like me. So if you think someone you know is struggling, reach out. And if you're not sure where to turn to or how to help, I'm here. You can come see me. I'm Jennifer DeWitt, and I'm the Prevention Coordinator for the City of Waterbury Department of Public Health.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone, to this regular meeting of the Waterbury, Connecticut Board of Education for Thursday, July 15, 2021. This is a virtual meeting being facilitated via Zoom technology. Our first agenda item is a silent prayer. And Darren Schwartz, I believe you have something to add on to this?
Yes, thank you, President Pagano. Good evening, Commissioners. A moment of silence this evening. Let us remember, a former member of the Waterbury Public Schools Education Community was passed away, Jack Larissian. He's a retired biology and science teacher at Willby and Kennedy High Schools, who passed away on July 1, 2021, at 91 years old.
Thank you, sir. Our next agenda item is a pledge of allegiance. Anne Sweeney, since you're out of country, I don't think that would be apropos. But since Commissioner Stango is in country, Charles, would you lead us, please?
Sure. My pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Commissioner Stango. Carrie Swain, would you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Brown, here. Vice President Harvey, here. Commissioner Hernandez, here. Commissioner Nardozzi. Commissioner Orso, here. Commissioner Serrano O'Dorno, here. Commissioner Stango, here. Commissioner Sweeney, here. Commissioner Vanstone, present. President Pagano, present.
Thank you. Agenda item number four, Commissioner Anne Sweeney, would you do the honors, please?
Motion to receive and place on file, communications as listed.
I got a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion, comments, thoughts? Commissioner Liz Brown, the floor is yours.
I just want to congratulate our board. I see on 4A that CADE has recognized our board for a Leadership of Distinction Award. So congratulations, board.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Brown. And everyone, give yourself a round of applause. If you've got a cocktail, keep it under the desk, and a toast. Any other comments or questions? All right. Please, if you are in agreement with this motion, would you please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, abstain? Eyes have it, motion carries. Thank you very much. Our next agenda item is public addresses to the board, of which I've been told there are no callers. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. I've also been told that the next agenda item, which was superintendent's announcements, I have a big red none. Dr. Ruffin, do you have anything you want to add?
Not this evening, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Schwartz, you don't have anything to enlighten us with tonight, right?
No, sir.
Well, then I'll continue with that roll, and the president will not have any comments tonight either. There are no student representatives tonight. So our next agenda item is agenda number nine, the Consent Calendar. Does anyone wish to remove an item from the consent calendar? Karen Harvey, is your hand raising?
No, I'm scrolling my cell phone.
Okay, thank you. No one has anything to remove. So with that going forward, I will read the consent calendar. Item 9.1, it's a request for approval of the revised 2021 through 2022 school year calendar and the new calendars for school years 2022 to 2023, along with 2023 through 2024. Item 9.2, is a request for approval of an agreement with the Clydesdale Manufacturing Company for manufacturing externship slash pre-apprentice programs for Waterbury Career Academy students. Item 9.3, requesting an approval of an agreement with the Dumischoe Paper Company of Connecticut, Incorporated, to provide green cleaning products. Item 9.4 is a request for approval to apply for the 21st Century Community Learning Centers Grant for Walsh and Drake Schools, grades three through five. Item number 9.5 is a request of approval to apply for the 21st Century Community Learning Centers Grant for Chase School, grades three through five, and Buck Hill School, grades one through three tentatively. Item 9.6 is a request for approval to apply for the 21st Century Community Learning Centers Grant for Wallace Middle School, grades six through eight. Item 9.7 is a request of approval for a professional services agreement with Empirical Revolution, Incorporated, also known as Quill.org, for online grammar and writing program. Item 9.8 is a request of approval of a professional services agreement with Power School Group, LLC, for an online grading and data management system for secondary schools, grades six through 12. Item 9.9, requesting an approval of an amendment two to the professional services agreement with Teaching Strategies, LLC, for early childhood preschool curriculum. Item 9.10 is a request of approval of an amendment two to the professional services agreement with Cormier Consulting, LLC, for teacher and administrator professional development. Item 9.11 is a request approval of an agreement with the AAA Nursing Services, LLC, for nursing services. Item 9.12, requesting an approval of a professional services agreement with Pediatric Services of America, doing business as Aviana Healthcare for Nursing Services. Item 9.13 is a request of approval of a Connecticut Community Colleges Facility Request/Reservation Agreement. Item 9.14 is a request for approval of an agreement with Greater Waterbury Young Men's Christian Association, the YMCA, for summer day camp program at Camp Matausia, which is SR2-funded. Item 9.15 is a request approval of an agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Waterbury, Incorporated, for summer day camp program, another SR2-funded request. Item 9.16 is a request of approval of a professional services agreement with Catapult Learning, LLC, to provide Waterbury's non-public Title I tutoring services. Item number 9.17, Committee on Building of School Facilities. And number 9.18, the Committee on Building of School Facilities for use of school facilities by outside organizations and/or waiver requests.
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar items 9.1 through 9.18.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Harvey. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Anybody have a question, comments, discussion point? All right. I don't see anybody's hand waving. So if you're in agreement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If you're disagree, please let me know by saying no. If you abstain, I understand. But it seems like the ayes have it, so the motion carries. Thank you very much. We are now on agenda item number 11, Committee on Finance. Commissioner Rocco Orso, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number 11.1, request approval of a transfer in the 2020 slash 2021 fiscal year budget.
Second.
Thank you very much. Anybody have a discussion, or a question, or a comment? Do we do this by roll call, or do we do it by consensus?
Consensus.
Okay. If you're in agreement with this change, would you please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
If you're in a disagreement, please let me know by saying no. Seems like the ayes have it. The motion carries. Thank you very much. Commissioner Orso.
Item number 11.2, request approval of an agreement with SLAM Collaborative for a long-range infrastructure facilities planning study.
Second.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Harvey. Anyone have a question or comment on this? All right. If you're in agreement with us, please signify by letting me know on aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, please let me know by saying no. The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Thank you very much. Commissioner Orso.
Item number 11.3, request approval of a maintenance and on-call service agreement with Soraco Mechanical Services, Incorporated, for citywide on-call HVAC services.
Second.
Thank you very much. Anybody have a question or a comment on this? If you're in agreement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please let me know by saying no. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Thank you very much, and thank you, Commissioner Orso.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Next item number 12 is Committee on Policy and Legislation. Commissioner Anne Sweeney, the floor is yours.
President Pagano, I just want to check and make sure we're not getting, still getting a delay?
Okay.
I'm okay? Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Policy and Legislation recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve the submittal of the following resolution proposal to CADE. CADE urges the State Department of Education and the General Assembly to take action to provide flexibility to comprehensive high schools, to employ individuals in career and trade fields as instructors, similar to that provided to the Connecticut Technical and Education Career System.
Second.
Thank you very much for the motion and the second. Does anyone have a question, comment, or want to discuss any part of this? All right. I don't see anybody desiring to speak to it, so I will take a request. If you're in agreement with this, would you please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No? Abstain? The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Sweeney. Item number 13, Committee on Curriculum. I give the floor to Commissioner Thomas Van Stone.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. Item 13.1, I move to approve the following revised high school science courses as recommended by the Committee on Curriculum. A, environmental science. B, forensics. C, human biology. D, human biology with CPR and first aid.
Second.
Thank you very much for the motion and the second. Anyone want to discuss any part of this, or have a question? All right. If you're in agreement with the motion and the second, would you please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Abstain? Opposed? Motion carries. The ayes have had it. Thank you. Commissioner Tom Van Stone, item 13.2.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. 13.2, I move to approve the following new high school CTE courses as recommended by the Committee on Curriculum. A, Intro to Management Post. B, NELTA, the New England Laborers Training Association. C, Drone Technology. D, Drone Operator Prep Honors. E, Manufacturing Three Honors. F, Foundation of Leadership Post. G, Financial Accounting Post. H, Managerial Accounting Post. I, Principles of Marketing Post. J, Social Media Marketing Post. K, If You Love It, Teach It, UConn. L, Intro to Special Education, UConn. M, Software Development 1. N, Software Development 2. O, Conceptual Engineering Milestones. P, Engineering Design Project Honors. And Q, Robotics 2 Honors.
Second.
Thank you for the motion, thank you for the second. If you're in agreement, anybody want to discuss any of this before we move on to the vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Harvey, the floor is yours.
Thank you. If we, if you have the opportunity, we did go through this in our committee, and the presentation was made, but President, let me, President, listen to me. Give me your promotion there. Commissioner Van Stone, did we tape our committee meeting?
We did.
Okay. And where is that? Is that tape on our web?
The audio is on the web. I have the actual video recording, if anybody wants it.
Okay. I would advise that those who are not in attendance for this curriculum meeting, that when you have the opportunity, that take a moment to just kind of listen and, you know, to the presentation. This is just really very encouraging to see what we're presenting to our students. So I would just like to make that recommendation.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have a question or a comment? Okay. If you're in agreement with this motion and second, would you please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
If you're opposed to it, would you please signify by saying no? Or abstain? The ayes have it, motion carries. Commissioner Van Stone, item 13.3.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. Item 13.3, I move to approve the following new middle school CTE courses as recommended by the Committee on Curriculum. A, Computer Science Exploration 1. B, Computer Science Explorations 2. And C, Computer Science Explorations 3.
Second.
Thank you for the motion, thank you for the second. Anybody need a clarity, or a discussion, or a question on these three programs? Commissioner, oh, Mr. Darren Schwartz, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I provided, Commissioner, I'm sorry, provided the clerk, Carrie Swain, with the presentation, if we do want to send that out as well. And these are three middle school programs, just in addition, is the three middle school programs that is based on the Amazon Future Engineer Program. So it's, comes highly recommended in the computer science world. And I'm sure we can get this presentation out to you, if not today, by early tomorrow.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Rocco Orso, and then Commissioner Liz Brown.
I also agree with Vice President Harvey. If you do get a chance to look at the presentation, because Darren and Mike did a great job, and it really explained all these projects on it, and it's very exciting for the students.
Thank you, Commissioner Orso. Commissioner Liz Brown, was your hand up?
I just echo what Rocco said. Great work, great for our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much, both of you. Anybody else have a comment or question? All right. If you're in agreement with this motion and the second, would you please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
If you're opposed, please signify by saying no. Abstain? The ayes have it, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Commissioner Tom Van Stone. We now are going into executive session. Commissioner Anne Sweeney, would you do the segue, please?
Motion to convene an executive session for discussion concerning the employment, employment performance evaluation, health, or dismissal of a public officer or employee.
Second.
Thank you very much for the motion and the second. Anybody want to discuss? Please, if you're in agreement with this, would you please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Ayes have it, motion carries. We're going into executive session. Will?
Understand, Dr. Ruffin, if she can, from the airport, will be joining us, as well as Darren Schwartz and Juan Mano.
Okay.
Yes.
Will Zuda, why are you?
I'm right here, I'm putting everybody into the waiting room.
Commissioner Sweeney, the floor is yours.
Motion to return from executive session to the regular order of business. No votes were taken.
Second.
Thank you very much for the motion, and thank you for the second. Anyone have any questions, comments, or concerns? If you're in agreement with us coming back, would you please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The ayes have it, motion carries. We're up to item number 14, the Committee on School Personnel. Commissioner Charles L. Stango, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item 14.1, I move to approve the appointment of Carlin Fitzpatrick as Vice Principal of Kennedy High School, effective immediately, as submitted and recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
Second.
Thank you for the motion, thank you for the second. Anyone have any, well, anyone have a question or concern before we go forward? Dr. Ruffin, are you still on the line?
I am still here, and...
Would you like to say a couple of words?
I would. You have the background noise in Minneapolis. But I'd like to strongly recommend Carlin as the Assistant Principal of Kennedy, in addition to all of those things that we mentioned, and her dedication towards the school. I think she is the right appointment at this time, as the school is in turnaround and the influence that she could have on teaching and learning at a school that is going to be riding its year of towards of being a Commissioners Network school. Also, with her involvement with increasing the graduation rate at a time that was critical for Kennedy, I think she played a critical role there. And we would expect that the work that she has done, and the work, joining the team, and working with the principal, there's going to be great things happening with Kennedy moving forward. So I highly recommend her as the Vice Principal for Kennedy High School.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ruffin. Do we do a roll call on this, or do we have to do?
Yes.
Yes.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. We have a motion, we have a second, and we've had a word from the Dr. Ruffin. So Carrie, would you please do the roll call vote?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Orso?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano O'Dorno?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Stone?
Yes.
President Pagano?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. And Carlin, congratulations.
I think she's on, Commissioner, in case she wants to say a couple of words and introduce her family.
She has the floor, Carlin, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you so much. I'd like to thank Dr. Ruffin and Mr. Schwartz, President Pagano, all the commissioners, and my family, my children are running around trying to get them to bed. My parents, who are watching on the live stream. Ms. Data Harris, who is here supporting me, because she is the best mentor anyone could ask for. And, you know, everyone who I've worked with over the last 10 years, and I'm really looking forward to the next 20, working at Kennedy. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job. Commissioner Charles L. Stango, the floor is yours for item 14.2.
Okay, 14.2. I move to approve the appointment of Jason Martinez as the Vice Principal of Willby High School, effective immediately, as submitted and recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
Second.
Thank you for the motion, thank you for the second. Anyone want to have a question or discussion on this? I don't see anybody's hand up. So I'm assuming, Dr. Ruffin, do you want to say a couple of words?
Yes. During the interview process and considering the needs of, for all of the schools, this is the process we go through for all schools, where we found that this is, Jason is highly recommended for Willby High School because of his current work that he does at North End, and also his contributions that he will continue to bring to Willby High School, as they are a turnaround school, and in their, going into their second year of turnaround in the Commissioners Network. I think that he adds a tremendous amount of strength to building the culture and climate at Willby. He's very proud Waterburyan, and I think that you're going to be able to see that exhibited in the way that Willby is going to be working, moving forward. So I highly recommend Jason Martinez as the Vice Principal for Willby High School.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ruffin. Carrie, would you please do the roll call vote?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Orso?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano O'Dorno?
I don't see. Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Stone?
Yes.
President Pagano?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations to Jason, go Willby. Our next agenda item is item number 15, Superintendent's Notification to the Board. Commissioner Anne Sweeney, would you do the honors from there adrift on the island of wherever you are?
Motion to receive and place on file Superintendent's Notification to the Board, items 15.1 through 15.11.
Second.
Point of order?
Yep.
Could you repeat the motion, Anne, again?
Motion to receive and place on file Superintendent's Notification to the Board, items 15.1 through 15.11.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion, any comments, any concerns? If you are in favor and in agreement with this, would you please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you very much. From the island of Aruba to the island of misfit toys, we are up to item number 16.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I think we're going to get you the Nobel Peace Prize there, Mr. Rocco Orso. Would anyone like to discuss Rocco's insanity? All right. If you're in agreement, would you please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
If you're opposed to it, please stand in the corner and say no. Everyone, thank you very much. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have yourself a very good couple of weeks in July. And Anne, will we see you back in the States on the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
All right. Beautiful. Everyone, have a good evening and a good weekend. Bye-bye.
You as well.
Thank you. See you soon. Bye-bye. Bye-bye.